Everyone, it's 7 o'clock and we will call this meeting to order. Please stand wherever you may be for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Agenda Item 2. Sorry, 3, Roll Call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabbe.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 4, Announcements, Acknowledgements, and Communications of Reports. The only announcement I believe we have is a statement from me and then we will move on. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to City of Mount Clemens' first-ever virtual City Commission meeting. I'm Mayor Laura Cropp. With me in the cable TV studio of McComb Cable Network located in Mount Clemens High School, our City Manager, Don Johnson, City Clerk Lisa Borges, possible, sorry. Mike Murray via conference call. And from McComb Cable Networks, we have Senior Producer Patrick Linneberry and Producer Darren Roberts. Oh, am I muted? I can't hear me. You hear me, okay, sorry. The other members of the City Commission and other staff members are connected remotely, just like you are. This is the first time we've done anything like this, so please be patient if everything doesn't go perfectly. The reason we're doing this is we cannot hold a conventional meeting without endangering the health of participants and violating an executive order of the Governor. We cannot simply cancel meetings because of charter requirements and because of the need for City Commission approval of many routine business items such as paying the bills. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. We can do that because we are broadcasting from the Mount Clemens Studios rather than from the City Commission chambers in City Hall. MCN does not have the equipment necessary to do a live telecast from City Hall. When this emergency is over and we return to holding normal in-person meetings at City Hall, we will have to return to a delayed telecast. Procedurally, tonight's meeting will be slightly different than a normal meeting. If you ever participated in a large conference call, you know the problems that occur when two or three people attempt to speak at the same time. To control that, we will have all participants muted. Commissioners will be unmuted one at a time when it's their turn to speak. When you wish to speak, press or click on the Raised Hand button. I'll call on you, and Patrick will unmute you. When it's time to vote, we will do a roll call vote and the City Clerk will call you just like at a normal meeting. When we get to the public comment portion of the meeting, we will start with persons connected via the Zoom app who can use their Raised Hand function. Then, we will open the floor to those dialing in on a telephone. There is no Raised Hand function for dialing callers to let me know you wish to speak, so we will unmute everyone. If you wish to speak, announce your first name only. We'll do our best to put together a list of names, and I'll call on people one at a time. When you are called upon, please give us your full name and address and limit your comments to 3 minutes. Those of you who have logged into the city's website to see the agenda, you will have noticed the new way it is presented. Instead of one packet file with all the reports, each Agenda Item is linked to its corresponding report. Click on the Agenda Item. Clicking on the Agenda Item will bring up the report and related documents for that item. With that, let's begin. Item Number 5, Adoption of the Agenda.
Move to adopt the Agenda as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Commissioner Fournier?
I have none.
Commissioner Mensah?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
And I don't either. Roll Call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabbe.
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Agenda Item passes. Agenda Item 6, Public Participation. Okay, do we have anyone raising their hand on the Zoom app?
We're going to identify 30586, 747, 7979.
Please give your name and address and limit your comments to 3 minutes.
Wanda Goodenough, 11 Michigan, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I have no comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no other callers. Wait a minute.
Okay, anyone on our conference? Hearing none? Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, Administrative Responses to Issues or Questions Raised During Previous Meetings.
We have none.
Okay, moving on to item number 8, Approval of Minutes.
Of Minutes for regular City of Mount Clemens, March 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Campbell, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Commissioner Fournier?
No.
Commissioner Mensah?
No.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Okay, very good. Roll Call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabbe.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 1, General Business, 9A, Emergency Declaration.
Motion to adopt the City of Mount Clemens State of Emergency Declaration as presented.
In response to the COVID-19 outbreak, Mayor Laura Cropp declared a state of emergency on Monday, March 16th. That order specifically closed all city buildings to the public. Most buildings, except City Hall, were already closed by my order on March 13th. The March 16th meeting of the City Commission was also postponed. The Michigan Emergency Management Act, Public Act 390 of 1976, or Section 30410B of the Michigan Compiled Laws, requires the local governing body act to extend a declaration of emergency beyond 7 days. The state emergency will continue well beyond 7 days, so we're asking the Commission to approve the revised declaration of emergency which follows. I will read the State of Emergency Declaration. We have also provided commissioners and the public copies of the executive order we're operating under and of the Mayor's original emergency declaration. I'm not going to read those. City of Mount Clemens State of Emergency Declaration. Whereas, on March 16th, 2020, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmore declared a state of emergency with immediate effect regarding the coronavirus COVID-19. The State of Emergency authorizes maximum efforts and assistance to local governments and officials to attempt to contain and slow the virus spread. And whereas, on March 16th, Mayor Laura Cropp declared a state of emergency for the City of Mount Clemens. And whereas, Michigan Compiled Laws 30.410B requires action by the City Commission to extend an emergency declaration in excess of 7 days. And whereas, the City of Mount Clemens continues to be impacted by, and the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens is threatened by coronavirus COVID-19. And whereas, in an effort to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and visitors and slow the spread of the virus, the closure of all city buildings is deemed necessary. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved, the City Commission of the City of Mount Clemens hereby extends the declaration of the Mayor to March 16th, 2020, for a period of 90 days or until rescinded by a subsequent declaration of the Mayor or the City Commission that the State of Emergency has ended. It is further resolved, this action is taken pursuant to City of Mount Clemens Ordinance Number 20.021, Section 21, City of Mount Clemens Ordinance 40.203, Section 3, and State of Michigan Emergency Management Act, Michigan Compiled Laws 30.401. It's further resolved that all city buildings shall remain close to the public for the well-being and health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and visitors of the City of Mount Clemens. And it is further resolved that all meetings of the City of Mount Clemens Boards and Commissions and the Mount Clemens City Commission shall be conducted in compliance with Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmore's Executive Order Number 2020-15 or such subsequent executive orders as may be issued. It is finally resolved, the City Manager is hereby authorized to take such action as he deems necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and visitors of the City of Mount Clemens and provide such emergency assistance as may be required.
Okay, we're going to open it to questions and comments. Commissioner Campbell?
No, I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Fournier?
No questions.
Commissioner Mensah?
I have no questions or comments.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No questions.
The only thing I wanted to add was, I think that the City Manager and the staff at the city have taken this emergency declaration very seriously, and they've done a fantastic job making sure that city facilities, you know, were closed down to the public in an appropriate manner. So, I wanted to thank them for their efforts.
Thank you.
Give me a roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabbe.
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda Item 9B, Communication with Residents.
Resolution for Communication with Residents as Presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. During, I believe it was my first interview, it might have been the second, I was asked about whether Royal Oak had the ability to send text messages to residents, which we did at that time and as of this moment, Mount Clemens does not. We do have the ability to send emails to people who have signed up to receive them, but we cannot send text messages, we cannot send voice messages using any software or hardware that we presently own. I asked Patrick Linneberry to investigate our options for providing text, voice, and email communications. He obtained proposals from four firms, but only one of these can provide all three services and seamlessly integrate them with our website software. And that is the firm that actually provides our website software, GovOffice. The cost of this service is $1,800 per year plus message charges for voice and text calls. These amounts are $34 per 1,000 messages for text messages and $14 per 1,000 for voice messages. Patrick and I are recommending we proceed immediately with GovOffice to add this service to our website. We also, if this is done, will immediately begin doing our best to promote this and get people to sign up for it. We think it's an extremely important service that will give us the ability to communicate directly with every citizen if they sign up for it. But they do have to sign up for it. We can't, we can't just put in numbers arbitrarily.
Very good. We will open it for questions and comments. Commissioner Campbell?
No questions.
Commissioner Hammond?
No questions.
Commissioner Fournier?
I think it's a great idea. So, would we send via mail to all of the residents a, here's how you sign up? Because there are so many that wouldn't necessarily see it on Facebook or online anywhere.
I was thinking water bills.
My intention would be to use various resources that we have first before we get into something that we have to pay for postage. I would try to work with both local newspapers. I would include it in Clementines. I'm thinking of printing up basically a business card with the signup information on it that we can gift to all city commissioners, all staff, and other active people in the community to pass out and encourage people to sign up. And if that's not successful, then maybe we should look at doing a direct mail solicitation.
We also have the sign, the digital sign.
That's a good idea.
And I think this is actually a great opportunity. Right now, people are looking for ways to obtain information to stay up to date.
Also, the Mayor mentioned water bills as well.
If we've ever seen the importance of technology, the last week or so certainly has demonstrated that.
Yes, absolutely.
And this is not the only situation we'd use it for. Snow emergencies, it really helps if you can let everybody know that you declare a snow emergency. Other things occur.
Good things, too. Downtown events, I mean, lots of, I have lots of opportunities. Commissioner Mensah?
I just had some, Wanda Don, or City Manager Johnson, on the 34 per 1,000 for text messages and $14 per 1,000 for voice messages, did, did, have you got any estimate of what Royal Oak saw for those, for those extra costs?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect that to be that much. I mean, initially, at least, we'll see how many people we can get signed up for this. Frankly, if we can communicate with the majority of our citizens, I'm happy to pay that price.
Okay, I just wondered. I think it's a great idea. We've talked about this before, and then for some reason, when we talked about it before at the commission level, it was deemed too expensive, and this most certainly is not.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees?
I think it's a great idea. More information out to the public, the better off we are. So, I think it's a great idea.
And the only thing I have to add is that I brought this last year, so I'm really excited that we're going to have this opportunity to communicate with everyone. Okay, Roll Call, please. I'm sorry.
Crabbe.
Oh, yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Item 9C, Approval Purchase and Payments of Invoices.
Move approved purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Campbell?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Commissioner Fournier?
No.
Did we lose Commissioner Mensah? Oh, yeah, we might have.
We did.
We did.
Her name is gone.
Should we give her a second? Yes.
Oh, she's, she's out there.
Commissioner Mensah?
I am here.
Very good. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I have comments on the corrosion inhibitor. I, there's a $265 difference between giving that contract to a Michigan company versus a Pennsylvania company. I would like to see us keep our business in the state, especially at this point. $265 isn't that much. That's my comment.
Do we know, do we have any information on that?
I do not at this time, but she can make a motion to amend and change it.
All right, then I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we amend the payment of bills and invoices to award the corrosion inhibitor contract to the second lowest company, which would be Elhorn Engineering from Mason, Michigan.
I'll second it.
Based on the new motion on the floor.
One question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
My hand raised doesn't work now. If, was cost the only factor when they chose that company?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm assuming it was.
Question, it's not here.
I agree. If cost was the only factor, I would rather see it go to a Michigan company as well.
Why don't you just remove, make a motion to remove that item? And then you can get an answer for the next meeting.
I don't know how critical it is to get this corrosion inhibitor purchased, you know, or how fast we need to do it.
It's the estimated annual requirement, so I'm not sure. It doesn't sound immediate. Perhaps Jeff Wood could weigh in on that?
Jeff, are you on there?
Yes, but he's muted.
Unmute Jeff, please.
Roger.
I'm here. I don't have the answer to that. Typically, if the low bid, because that's our, our standard process is low bid, the low bid, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily look beyond if the low bidder was providing everything that was required. I, I can't answer the necessity at this point if it could wait another meeting, or I don't
Mr. Johnson, how would you like to proceed?
I would be comfortable proceeding with Commissioner Mensah's motion as presented. And if that actually poses a problem, we'll just delay action and bring it back to the City Commission.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
That works.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to amend page, attachment number 2, it looks like, for Elhorn Engineering income and the rest of the bills as presented. Commissioner Campbell, do you have any comments?
No.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Commissioner Fournier?
No.
Commissioner Mensah?
Mayhem.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Commissioner passes.
Agenda Item Number 10, Consent Agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 11, City Managers' Report.
Let me start with COVID-19 staff. From the point when this was written, and this was updated most recently on Friday, but it changed again today. On Friday, I said that we're trying to keep up with rapidly changing information regarding the coronavirus outbreak. I think everybody's aware that the Governor issued another executive order today, basically shutting down most operations in the state, anything that's not considered essential. As far as the city is concerned, we are continuing to operate essential services which include the Fire Department, the Water Plant, the Sewage Plant, the Department of Public Services. Within City Hall, we are, have some employees who are going to be reporting from work and other who we have sent home with laptop computers to work remotely. We have participated in electronic meetings last week with the County Executive and his staff, with Congressman Levin and representatives from almost all of the communities in his district. State of Emergency has been declared by the Mayor, and tonight, we asked and the Commission approved a motion to extend that State of Emergency. All city buildings are close to the public, all city meetings are canceled or postponed or planned to be held in this manner electronically. This particular meeting is the first time we've done that, so we're learning a whole lot as we do it, and well, we're going to be continuing over the next month. Staff is continuing to work, but we're taking efforts to maintain social distancing. Our cleaning crew is sanitizing all counters, all doorknobs, every surface that we expect employees to be touching. We already have had some employees working from home. As of tomorrow, there'll be about 10 employees working from home. Let's go into first weeks on the job. Before the coronavirus became the central focus of my life, I was in listen and learn mode, meeting with city commissioners, city staff, and other people. I've toured all major city facilities, including the water and sewer plants. I spent Wednesday evening, March 11th, riding with the Boone County Sheriff's Deputy. I had planned on doing that again on a Friday or Saturday by now, but COVID-19 became the focus of my life and decided I'd rather not be in a car with one other person and exposed to who knows what else. From my first round of meetings, I've developed a list of other people that I need to meet, but it looks like most of my initial contacts will need to be by telephone, and I'll be doing that as things settle down this week. We have implemented some changes in the agenda that you've all seen by now. The format of Agenda Reports has changed. We replaced the packet with reports that are linked directly to Agenda Items. You need only a click on the item to bring up the corresponding report. That'll make it much easier to find reports. You don't have to wait through the whole packet. We intend to begin providing commissioners with the agenda and reports six days prior to the meeting, but we're not there yet. I don't even have reports from staff for the next meeting yet. City Commission meeting, this meeting was held, of course, as a virtual meeting. We started preparations for this meeting under the authority of Governor Whitmore's Emergency Directive 2020-02 and plan to use the same email public comment process used by the City of Sterling Heights on March 16th. However, a new executive order was issued on Wednesday of last week, the end of the day, which provides extensive rules for conducting electronic meetings and requires live public comment. So, we had to alter our plans considerably to be able to do this. We do have the system in place. We think it's working, but hopefully, it will be refined a little bit more before we get to our next meeting. We do tentatively have budget work sessions scheduled for next week. I'll let you know whether we're going to plan to continue those or not. I have not received the budget yet from Finance Director Cliff Mason. It is my intention to do two budgets this year. We talked about this in the one-on-one sessions with commissioners. The initial budget should be regarded strictly as an interim budget. This will be basically a status quo document to continue operations as they exist right now. There'll be very few changes, although there will be some corrections. Cliff did find a couple of major errors in the budget that he will be correcting, both with an adjustment to the current budget and in the interim budget. We will be doing a second budget process after we hold a strategic planning session with the Commission. This will allow us to... This will allow us to prepare a budget that reflects the goals of the commission and actually gives me time to have some input into the budget myself. Board of Review. Board of Review did meet Monday, March 16th, from 9:00 to noon, and from 1:30 to 4:30 on Tuesday. They were the only meetings that took place in City Hall this week. Elections. The city clerk's office reported a 32.5% turnout of Mount Clemens voters for the March 10th, 2020 presidential primary election. The next election in the city of Mount Clemens is the state primary on Tuesday, August 4th. In addition to federal, state, and county offices, the ballot will include the special election for the city to fill the vacancy on the city of Mount Clemens City Commission. The position is for a partial term expiring in November of 2021. To qualify, a candidate must be at least 18 years of age, a registered voter, and a resident of Mount Clemens for at least 365 days immediately prior to the last day of filing for office. Candidate packets are available at the city clerk's office, which isn't open. If you wish to obtain a packet, please call in, we'll see that it gets to you. Nominating petitions require a minimum of 40 signatures, but no more than 100 signatures. The deadline to file and submit nominating petitions is Tuesday, April 21st, at 4:00 PM. Anyone wishing to pick up a candidate packet or to file their petition should call the city clerk's office at 586-469-6818, extension 310. That's 586-469-6818, extension 310. 2020 Census. Residents should be receiving, I've already received mine, official mail or email from the U.S. Census Bureau with detailed information on how to respond to the 2020 census. We cannot stress enough the importance of making sure everyone in the city of Mount Clemens is counted, because it provides the basis for reapportioning congressional seats. It also impacts funding for city, the city receives from the federal and state government. This tells me the computers are available from Mount Clemens Public Library, but that is currently closed. Any questions? Staff will assist you. Call the city clerk's office at the number I just provided, 586-469-6818, extension 310. Compost program is being scheduled to begin the week of March 30th on your regularly scheduled refuse pickup day. Please do not place refuse container or brown paper leaf bags out at the curb until the week of March 30th. Any questions regarding yard waste pickup can be directed to the Department of Public Services office at 586-469-6847. Thank you.
Very good. Agenda item number 12, public participation, part, sorry, public participation? Do we have anyone on the Zoom app?
Here's the right of the address, 248-990-1124.
If you'd like to speak for public participation, if you would give your name and address?
Hi, this is just Kathy, I'm just listening in.
Hi, Kathy.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, anyone else on the Zoom app?
No one else in the queue.
Okay, and how about in the call-in?
No.
Okay, very good. Moving on to commissioners' comments. Commissioner Campbell.
I'm glad to hear that Kathy was listening in, and everything seems to have worked okay so far. That's it.
Commissioner Hammond.
I was going to say, I know this has been a difficult time for everyone, but we all have to do our part by staying home, stay safe, and save lives. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Yes, I echo that, those sentiments as well, and we also need to stay positive right now and follow the guidelines out there. I do want to note, there's, we all know someone we can give a shout out to after seeing all the activity in this last week, and we had the, you know, St. Patrick's Day, putting the shamrocks on the window. There's just been a lot of good ideas floating around out there, but I want to just recognize our postal workers. I have, we are relying on that post office right now, from a business perspective, as well as a personal perspective, to get things packed and forwarded. And, you know, they're taking a risk every day, they're out in the community, and I want to give them a vote of thanks. And I also want to thank the people at Meyer. Meyer is the primary store around here for our grocery and many other needs, and those, those people have really stepped up and are working hard with a lot of risk. Moving on, I am thrilled that March 30th is, finally, we can put our compost bags back out there. But I want to encourage families that are out for their walks, and I see a lot of them out there these days, take a small garbage bag with you. Why not pick up the trash? Let's be Clean City as well, as well as our city. There's a lot of properties that could use some sprucing up. We can't work in groups, but we can work, you know, alone or with our kids. We can go up, and the front of the high school could sure use, the yard could sure use a cleanup. The Salvation Army at the corner of church and, and Southbound Grashit needs some pickup. So we can see it out there, we don't have to have a formal program, let's just try to make the city a clean city as well. And I do want to say, especially though, that downtown, I walked through there a couple days ago, and it was very clean, so that was good. It's when you get outside of there that it gets a little bit rougher. And one other thing that, my sister-in-law, Susan Dom, is experienced and expert seamstress. She is making masks for one of the area hospitals, because they don't have enough. These are not, these are specialized masks. They have to have a pocket for a filter and a layer of non-woven material, and there's all kinds of requirements for them. And I can't sew a button on, but I can help her with materials. But if there is anyone out there that might want to help with this project, email me on my city email, lfournier@cityofmountclemens.com, and I'll get her in touch with Sue, or whoever with, with you. And again, I want to thank Mr. Johnson, that's baptism by fire the last couple of weeks, and Patrick, you as well, for setting up this Zoom meeting. That's it, thanks. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
I just wanted to express condolences to the family of Elaine Winkler. Elaine Winkler passed away this past week. She was a substitute teacher for the Mount Clemens School System. People will remember her husband, Robert Winkler, who was a long-term employee of the, of the, of the school system, and very beloved in the community. So my condolences go out to the Winkler family. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
City Manager Johnson, for, for our meetings that we had, I think they were very, very productive. I think he's going to do a great job. Again, you had, you know, trial by fire with this, but I'm glad we had someone with, with plenty of municipal experience to handle, handle this crisis. We are, we are resilient, we are, we are Clemites. We will, we will get through this, and we will come out much stronger. But we need to be smart and safe. And I believe that, you know, this, the order by Governor Whitmer, closing up businesses and, and only essential things be done, this will, will flatten the curve of, of...
For my comments tonight, I of course want to start with thanking Mr. Johnson. Oh, someone's, someone's ringing. I wanted to thank Mr. Johnson, the first week, we shut, we shut, we had to shut City Hall down. But really, there's been a great partnership, and it's been fantastic. It's been a difficult situation. Obviously, no one ever expected any of this, so I appreciate all of your effort. It's been, it's been great working with you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Patrick, Mr. Johnson, and all the city of Mount Clemens staff that helped make this meeting happen this evening. A lot of planning and thought went into the technology of tonight's meeting. I want to assure everyone in the city of Mount Clemens, myself, the commissioners, the city manager, and every employee of the city of Mount Clemens is dedicated and working tirelessly to help keep you healthy and safe. The governor's order to stay home, stay healthy, save lives, will be enforced and is going to help flatten the curve of the coronavirus. Your cooperation of this order is expected and appreciated. I'm so pleased that today we approved the purchase of a text notification system. This system will help us allow to notify residents of needed information very quickly. Please watch our webpage and Facebook page in the coming days, so that you can sign up for the text system in the next few days, and also help us promote it to all of your neighbors. I, too, would like to express condolences tonight for the family of Grace Shore. Grace was the executive director of the McComb County Chamber. Her daughter, Kelly Levati, is the new director of McComb County Chamber, and they have served this community well. I hope everyone takes the next few weeks to organize their closets, spend time with their immediate family members, and do some relaxing. When all of this is over with, I know Mount Clemens and all of its residents will be ready to move forward. Thank you very much. Those are my comments. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Very good. It is 7:42, and we will, with that, we will adjourn.